From fourteen fifty-eight to sixteen sixty-six.
Fourteen forty-eight to sixteen sixty-six.
Right.
Is that fourteen forty-eight?
Clerical assistant.
Oh, maybe you're right. Maybe it was fourteen fifty-eight to...
I think you're right, Mr. Ryder. I think you're right.
Amendment two fourteen fifty-eight from what?
Fourteen fifty-eight to sixteen sixty-six.
Got it.
So there's enough money in this line to transfer all this money out and pay this person this two dollars more an hour?
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Bluh, based off of thirteen pay periods at that increase rate, that we would still have probably thirty-nine hundred dollars remaining at the end of the year, based off of limited hours worked by individuals in that position for the first, at least three months, possibly four months in a year.
Also, I have a motion by Paul Ryder to...
Amendment to salary.
And seconded by, it was a second, correct?
Correct.
To increase the clerical assistant pay from, on the salary ordinance from...
Can you say that? Fourteen fifty-eight.
Fourteen fifty-eight.
To sixteen sixty-six.
To sixteen sixty-six.
Effective...
Thank you.
June twenty-second.
Thank you. Can you?
Is there any discussion or motion?
Yeah. Are you asking for just the salary ordinance to be amended, or are you also asking for an approval of the transfer?
I thought we didn't have to transfer.
You transferred all of them?
There's not money in it.
There wasn't a transfer on this one. Correct?
The physician failed for four months, so that's why I have a money in the...
My question is, where did you get the sixteen sixty-six because it's higher than what I'm comparing it to?
Okay, I thought we maybe have the wrong number for circuit superior court. Let's talk to the judges.
Who are you comparing it to?
Whoever the bailiff did want hired. Right. I don't know what they listed.
Delegation secretary is at sixteen fifty-four.
What were the wages for superior circuit?
Deputy court reporter. The only ones that could change was the chief court reporter and the deputy court reporter and the bailiffs. The bailiffs now make sixteen sixty-six.
I know, but I'm asking them, who are you comparing this position to or what? I mean, he kept saying they do the same jobs.
The bailiff.
The bailiff.
And what position is this again? I'm sorry.
Clerical assistant. That's listed on the budget.
In discussion on the motion?
Those are your print numbers.
I would just like to know as a person, I would assume that these people that are getting raises affected in June or that that they not be expected to also get another raise when it comes by their time.
You're... We're, I mean, please. We're talking about a two dollar an hour rate. Are we just gonna go to a multiple, like two budget cycles a year? Like, we're doing two dollar an hour raises in the middle of the year.
Didn't I ask that question when you did it for me? Did I say you were gonna open it again tomorrow?
I said very clearly when we were doing that, that we've been trying to get this done for two and a half years, the complete rebalancing of our course, and that this was a special exemption and that we needed to be clear that we have a budget cycle for a reason and this was a special exception. But now, like, what prevents every department in this courthouse from coming up here and making more budget improvements? Because we've changed pace. I mean, we have a budget for a reason, and this is not it.
Question on the floor. Will there be new job descriptions for re...
It's all completely different.
Yeah, that's what I thought. We don't have that. We're comparing. The prosecutor's office will... Or, I absolutely have everything that you said, you know, the hot one gets filled in your office.
The other thing you gotta remember is...
Maybe shut it upstairs.
Sure.
Not shut it upstairs.
The other thing you gotta remember is the jobs that they're doing haven't changed upstairs just because you changed the job description. Still the same jobs.
So...
So I get you changed the description, but...
But some of that... Chief court reporter did change.
Okay.
So is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
I did not. Oppose? Aye. Aye. Motion carries forward.
No.
Wait, I'm sorry, what?
I think it went down three, four.
I, okay, I'll call for another vote, please. All those in favor? Aye? Oppose? Same sign? Aye. Sorry, Doc, your head was in the way of your hand.
Fails three, four.
Fails three, four.
I do.
Okay. Is there any other business on prosecutor's own?
So the part, so I'm clear. The part-time clerical was denied, the clerical assistant was denied, and then the additional was advertised, and I need to be here through representation on the seventeenth.
Or I?
Well, through you on the seventeenth. Right.
Sure.
Okay.
Only one of those has passed, the part-time clerical.
Well, knowing the raise, I think that it looks like you, the one was approved and the other wasn't. Is that right?
Correct answer.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thanks.
I wanna just, I'm just, right, so I'm just making sure we're on the same page. I have an approval of the prosecutor's secretary pay increase.
Right.
That's the only pay increase that I see that passed.
Right, and I guess, I'm trying to understand why that one was passed and then the assistant wasn't. Is there somewhere in the middle we can meet to... So I'm trying to...
Is it, is it...
Well, I don't wanna put anybody on the spot, but I gotta go back to my office now and say, look.
Well, it's because it was full-time and part-time, correct?
No.
Well, no, the other full-time was denied. So I guess I'm curious, is there a me, is there a common ground somewhere to me? Is it the amount of the increase? Is it, I guess I'm curious. Maybe that's something more appropriate to talk to Mr. Ayers about in private capacity, but I guess I don't understand.
Well, we'll have to circle back later.
Well, I don't understand that answer either, I guess. You want me to hang around and wait, or what? I guess, I'm sorry, not to be obtuse here, but I guess I don't understand.
Well, I mean, there's, this isn't a...
We don't have to...
It's a place for...
Okay.
This, I mean, this is, I mean, we're happy to take a sidebar. I will be happy to take a sidebar if we get any, but...
Okay.
I just wanna make sure we're on the same page in terms of why was that?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks. Next item on the agenda is the August report.
Okay, so the first one is the transfer that we did to CCI Consulting. I did not have the correct amount on my, on the commissioner's transfer. I neglected to include the one forty-seven thirty-nine that was done in the last month. Or, so I needed fifty-four, have I written some? I changed my forty-four pounds, so I should have done... So the... It should have been fifty-four, three, six, fifty-seven. So I went ahead and transferred that amount because we need to get that paid. It's a really old bill that needed to be paid, so that's, I just wanted to tell you that that's what I did.
Fifty-four dollars, fifty-four cents?
No, it should have been increased by a hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. I did not have the correct, I took them all on. So I went ahead and did that, that bill's paid, those two outstanding bills have been paid and out of here. For like four, five months, so. The other is a correction on the circuit court and joint court wages. This doesn't have anything to do with the hourly wage. But when the judge did his reductions, he did not figure it correctly. I mean, I'm not saying anything mean, I'm just saying, since it was prolonged and then we went out to a different pay cycle, he reduced his circuit court budget, superior court judge reduced the circuit court budget by fifty-six hundred dollars. And so what I need to do, since I haven't sent anything into gateway or anything, and need your approval, is to not reduce it that much and keep some in to the joint courts. I need to fix this, or we're gonna have too much in one and not in another.
What does it need to be at the end of the day?
It needs to be a negative in the circuit court, chief court reporter, quartered by fifty-six thirteen and fourteen cents. And so then we would go to the joint courts and we would need to add that in line to two by one thousand twenty-two, which is the chief court.
That we have the same amount?
I have the same, so I did not do the figuring.
So moved.
Thank you.
Seconded by Paul Ryder.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dr. Stopp.
Let's go.
Paul Ryder, you do?
Mechanism, are we...
I just want to...
We're really requesting, we're requesting an additional on the joint courts, so, right?
I, I'm... Yes, the fiscal fix it. I believe, I'm, if I can...
What are you actually correcting?
Well, it sounds like maybe a correction during the argument section, but I don't know what it was.
It's not what we, it's what we approve. You need to approve a different amount, and you're probably right. It probably will have to be an additional, but I think...
The reduction that's required, any advertising?
That's just a correction. I think both of them are both just corrections, and I think we can do it that way. Because nothing has got on gateway yet. Nothing.
Well, I don't know what, Rachel, I don't know what we're trying to correct, because I don't think, I know nothing about the joint court.
We reduced his budget this much, so I took it down to him because she was still getting paid. Because we took out to the pay cycle, pay cycle after that meeting. But he did not give your name.
My suggestion would be is, yes, we can treat it as a pure correction, vote on it. But I'd check the state board on that, because I'm not sure how they would wanna look at that. It may be an additional. But I think they would be the ones who can clear.
So should we, just in extra caution, can we advertise the additional? If it's needed.
In case. Yeah, in case.
So is there an objection to advertising additional in joint courts? Or, or the chief court reporter, correct?
Yes.
For fifty-six thirteen fourteen, five thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars for it. Any objection?
But the other thing is, if you're gonna do it that way, then you need to go on hold for staring reduce.
Well, we've already lowered it, we're just gonna write.
Right. That would be... To correct the redu, the reduction in this budget.
Right, and we can do that.
So the reduction would need to be fifty-six thirteen fourteen, correct? And in a circuit court for the court report?
Reduction would be lower than the twenty-eight one oh seven thirty-one. Because he needed that fifty-six in, so it... Can you just mention if we can correct it and advertise what is in it?
Correction is, is a negative to circuit court of fifty-six thirteen and fourteen cents.
Correct.
Okay.
And an additional, if necessary, do an additional to the joint court fifty-six thirteen fourteen, same thing. And all we're, and all we're voting on here would be to correct both of those, plus and minus, and to approve an additional if necessary. And then you're gonna check the state board and see what you said, correct?
No, I think you said reduction in circuit court, that's really...
Reduction in circuit, addition to joint court.
We would just correct the reduction and not do so much, if that would be a quarter in mind, a vegetable in mind. So I don't think we have to advertise this, it's just a correction of what they... Because they advertised to reduce it by twenty-eight thousand dollars. You locate that, so you would just say you would... Because you can go up to that amount, you didn't do anything below that amount. So if they would correct what they wanted it to be reduced, it would work.
Yeah, you've lost.
I know.
That's why I tried to restate it, so that I would make sure that I understood it, and I restate it, you agree with me.
I know, but then I decided not to.
Okay. So what is it you're asking for, then?
I'm asking for, you had to...
Reduce circuit?
No, add to circuit, reduce, and then put it in joint court, so both of them, I guess, are additional.
Add to circuit, how much? How much added to circuit?
Fifty-six thirteen fourteen.
Fifty-six thirteen fourteen, and then to reduce from joint court? Correct?
Add to joint court.
Well, you were saying add to both.
He has, he hasn't brought me down with his figures. He was supposed to bring down my figures.
So is there a critical payroll error? I mean, does that count when I go negative?
Fifty-six thirteen fourteen. All I want to do is fix it.
What is this, Burge sells out?
So, re-circuit fifty-six thirteen and fourteen cents, is that right? And then we're gonna reduce joint court?
I think, I know the honest, it must be a lot along.
Okay, so all we're doing is adding to circuit? And the error that, and the error that was made that that correction is what? I'm not sure I know what the error is.
The error was that he took out, yeah, it was a time element. He took out this much, and he should not have taken out that much. But then we increased... We increased the joint courts by that amount, and I think that's what he thinks he needed by the end of the year. So I think that one is fine. They're not waiting on him to bring me down with figures to prove that, and if not, he can transfer it in a year.
So do we need to do it now?
No, just that.
So, so how do we rectify the joint court account? We have, which is, it's negative.
One...
Circuit court.
Excuse me. Thank you, yes.
We need to add in your reduction from twenty-eight one oh seven thirty-one to whatever is fifty-six thirteen.
Okay. And fourteen cents.
So we need to reduce the reduction?
Yes.
By five thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars and fourteen cents? Is that correct? And that will, that will, in essence, increase the number that's available because the reduction was... Boy, this is like a cat.
Okay, that's what I said. Just give me permission to fix it.
You made a motion.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to reduce the reduction by fifty-six thirteen fourteen, correct? Correct. Seconded by Dr. Stopp. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Same sign? Motion carries. Okay.
Okay, so the next thing I have was years of service report. Not everybody has turned in their years of service, so it's not completed, but I will get that completed and send out to you. As of right now, with the last one being turned in, there's twenty-three employees that have ten or more years of service. But I will have a complete list, and I'm happy to reply on that.
Thank you. Anything else, Beth?
No.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the compliance approval for Indiana Packers Corporation. So every year we have to approve their activation, that's what this group does. We have a... So I would need a motion to approve their activity.
So moved.
Say you...
Yep.
Motion by Paul Ryder.
Second.
Seconded by Ethan Brown. Seems like this was just a couple days ago when we were doing this last year, and right in the middle of COVID, but I think it bears repeating, and I said this last year, during this pandemic, they have, Indiana Packers has been a tremendous asset for this community, and we don't have to go very far out of this community to see how a similar business ran very poorly and affected the community with extreme consequences, so. Just for the record, I just wanted to thank Indiana Packers and our continued relationship with them and, I'm sorry, continue to encourage the council to, to make sure that we are, can do, to be good votes for them, because they are an appropriate citizenship.
I heard a reliable report, a comparison between Indiana Packers and Moses Warburg, just like nineteen eighty, Japanese were on top of it, like I thought in Spain, by the way, it was just no comparison. I do think if...
Yeah, and I mean, they were very proactive in that approach, and I, I don't think you could question that state wise in the community. Very appreciative.
You move.
Yes, how many things did it exactly? Now, we have two, two different, and time frame. It's twenty... I think that's like this bank is a few more. So any other discussion on the motion to approve the activation?
And that's on two of them?
Yeah.
The only two that there are.
Any other discussion? All right, I'll call for vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Seven oh? Okay. Is there any other business from the council? Oh, we, sorry, we have a...
Additional for the drain and, I gave you a new quote that she brought up. The first one was almost fifteen thousand, this is a little bit lower. I mean, it's a lot lower, I guess.
Yeah, it's a lot lower.
I think it's probably ninety thousand. It's a rain drain.
Yeah, I sent a question last month, it needed to be advertised. Basically, the town, or the Deer Creek Park over by twenty-nine and two eighteen, there's a county drain that runs through on the backside of the pond, and under code, the land, it's not on maintenance program, the landowners are responsible for maintaining, keeping trees off of the tile so the roots don't get in and plug it up and everything like that. When, the process of us putting it on maintenance, because there was some drainage backup, we did locate that there is a lot of tree roots down there, the water's actually coming up almost to two eighteen and then running down across the top of the ground, because there's so much pressure there, it's pushing up through the joints. We've seen the tile and everything, so. We was talking to the drainage ward, they requested that I come to the council and request the money to at least clear the trees off of it, and then the drain maintenance will pay for the new tile through there. And I got a quote, first one I got was for, from the tree technicians for thirteen-five. It's gonna do a fifty-foot wide path, five hundred foot long, and it's gonna be, all the brush is gonna be chipped up, and then the big logs are gonna be chunked up and laid on the sides by the pond, I guess, so that the park can possibly use it for firewood, have it cut up and split up and offer to the campers and stuff like that. And so, at that time, that's the only estimate I had. I had another one lined up to do, and they didn't do it until a couple days after you guys had your meeting, and it come back at ninety-six hundred dollars from Wildcat Tree Service. I've heard both, good things about both companies. Tree technicians, they, they can get in in like four to six weeks and do it. The Wildcat was looking more like ten to twelve weeks, so we're like almost three months out. Once I get on the, once I get your approval to go forward or with it. I talked to the, we did discuss it in our drainage ward meeting on Monday, and the drainage ward was okay with doing the Wildcat and waiting extra time, because it'll still be before fall, and we can get the drains done, or if we have fall rains all hit, and see how it helps the town Deer Creek and everybody else draining down through there with the council's funding and this, and that.
We need a motion.
Yeah, and it's, it's gonna be a county, it is a county drain, and it's gonna be on maintenance program. We just actually met the period and signed the papers Monday to take to the order, so they can establish a fund number board and stuff like that, so. We don't have a fund number set at this point, so.
Is this some money out, money is made out for us, just to actually appropriate?
This would be you guys paying this as we are owners of the Deer Creek Park, or the county owns the Deer Creek Park, I think.
Or an additional?
We have places additionally out. It will not become back, it's meant to have all trees cleared all over again. And then the maintenance, maintenance starts next year on, as far as the funds coming in for that. And that will be paying for the tile work, unless, we got about eight hundred foot of tile to replace through there. And extend out to Deer Creek, so Deer Creek's actually moving a little bit through there, so we need to extend our pipe further out. It's flooding neighboring properties right now, which is where Deer Creek used to be.
Make a motion to approve this additional?
Motion by Ethan Brown. And the amount for that?
Fifteen thousand.
Do you have fourteen?
That makes... Well, that, okay.
I mean, these are, and these are estimates, I mean, I mean, if it's close, I mean, we can, the drain pump itself could, you know, if it goes over five hundred, whatever, I might weigh that like that.
Okay, I thought, okay, I was...
How much money is in the drain?
Huh?
How much money is in the drain? I mean...
Right now, no, they just got established.
Right, so you just said if there's five hundred dollars over...
Well, we can borrow from the Pruma Fund to cover that until the money comes back in. They go here.
So where are we going?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'd remove the general drain Pruma Fund.
Okay.
That, well, that was, I mean, so, I have a motion, no second, so is there a...
Second.
Motion's made by...
We need to avail, but...
Quick question for you. The ninety-six hundred dollars, that's, that's just for cutting the trees, correct?
It's cutting and chipping the brush, it'll be ready for us to come in and put tile in afterwards.
Okay. But the fifteen thousand includes putting the new drain and everything, right?
No, I was, at the time, we had thirteen-five, and I didn't what the other estimate was, so I kinda just upped it a little bit, just to make sure. Because I thought he, the thirteen-five was maybe a little low. I was very closer to fifteen twenty thousand when I first seen how many trees coming in. But then the other guy committed lower, so...
So all you need right now is the nine-six?
Yeah.
I assume it's the general.
I'd like to amend my motion to the nine thousand six hundred dollars, please.
I assumed it was the general.
So, so I, the motion on the floor is to appropriate, well, we don't, we don't have anything about more than things from the order question. But, I mean, so we should probably, I'd like to have it come out of county general.
I believe the last thing you said should...
So we're gonna have to test it.
Yeah, we did.
So, my question is, and why wouldn't the, the drain pay for this and pay something back out of the improvement fund?
Because the drain was never on maintenance, so that funded, I mean, these trees, when we were talking twelve or thirteen of them that are, you know, almost thirty inches diameter. They didn't grow up overnight since we had our hearing to put it on maintenance. It was up, we should have been keeping the trees off of it the whole time.
How much is in your maintenance fund? How much is in your maintenance fund?
General improvement? Maintenance, um, right now, there's, um. It was like, after fall, seven, we'll carry around forty thousand.
So I think that's kind of his question. Why aren't, why aren't we taking the fifteen thousand from that?
Because. That, that is used to do repairs after, or once it's on maintenance and we haven't, um, actually, I mean, it's, it's, it's on maintenance now. But these trees were there before the maintenance done started. And so we, we were just trying to show a good date. I mean, we, we had caused a lot of water backup in Deer Creek. And I think that's part of their problems from, I mean, this is an eighteen-inch tile and it's not running, but I, when it was fully running over the ground. At the outlet, the pipe was only running probably three inches of water for an eighteen-inch pipe, it's not very much. So there's a lot of blockage there. And it just pushes everything back up and holds it up there.
And as I understand it, we are the property owner.
Yes.
And the law.
We'll get your cut on anybody else's property, other than.
And the law would impose on the property owner the obligation to keep it clear. And not go underneath the ground, but to keep a clear cut. And I think that's what the, I, I think that's what the request is, is you guys should have, over the years, have kept a clear cut. If you use a weed whacker when they were this big or not, I'm not sure they had weed whackers, but you know what I'm saying. Keep it clear. We didn't, we're the property owner. Now let's get it up to even and they'll take it from here because they don't have any money yet. Because they're gonna set, they're gonna be assessing adjourners to this, to this drainage, uh, who will take it from here. That's my understanding.
Yeah, and we said the drain maintenance fund right now is twenty-five hundred dollars per year collection. So it would take, you know, four years of collections for we even, where we can use more of the pipe than at that point. Because they don't like to use more than four years assessment on, on the improvement fund.
So we have, we have a motion, we're just waiting on it for it to come down. Would make sense if you had.
That's what I think.
And this is where we're concerned.
Here's the, isn't this?
Much more going on today.
Is that how much you got?
It might be, yeah, we probably got forty.
You got a job?
We have sixty thousand.
I thought it was.
Just a real lack of judgment from an attorney.
What did you say? I didn't write it down.
We got time to.
Um, you know, I, I think, I don't think we can do it that way.
I mean, say, I just.
No, I know.
Advertise a possibility of Deer Creek drain. So.
Right, because the, the original request said drain is forward and then we changed it. We changed it to that. I don't think we understood what the request was at that time because the, I, I thought this was an amount that we advertised. That, that we were gonna cede it, recover it out of that drain. But we, there's no money in the drain, so we can't, we can't pay anything out, even if we did that.
So can we just, we're just about to come in a little now?
Yeah, well, we need to find, think about where.
Do the payment court. And then they simply create a line and says, really, the Deer Creek drain, and put that money in, in county general. That really would be county general, right? So you want the county general and then put Deer Creek. I mean, because we don't have the drain established either, so we don't really want to. Not sure.
I mean, easy to think from my perspective, given how this situation is, is to either advertise it on a riverboat, so just you pay it directly on a riverboat. And then. The work's done and then they can assess the drainage and do whatever they gotta do there. I mean, does that make sense to you?
You still have that reason, is there?
Oh, well, that's what I mean, would it? I don't think there's a solution where we don't have to re-advertise.
No, I don't.
Does that, does that make sense to you?
There ever is.
I mean, riverboat's just easy because we just pay it directly on a riverboat. We don't have to put it into a specific line. Any opposition of re-advertising this under a riverboat?
Sorry, you have time to, for me to re-advertise this for June seventh?
Yeah, I mean, if I knew we were gonna do it for sure, I can get on the books. Like I said, it's gonna be ten, twelve weeks where they can start working after I tell them we got the money.
We're gonna do it.
I mean.
So you can get on the books.
I mean, if I can go and you put on the books, I mean, we're, it's gonna be, like I said, it's three months before we need to.
One way or the other, it has.
We don't pay till the job's done, right?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, they just need to know so they can get on the books, so. I mean, it'll be three months before we pay the bill anyway. We got time.
Okay.
I'll let them know.
Next time. Any other business from the council? I have one thing. And this is from the commissioner's attorney Ted Johnson about the jail that he texted me last night to inform the council. He said, "Pass information on the council that the architect wants to inform all prospective construction managers. The county proposed construction budget amount in advance of the June seventh proposal due date. Council's consensus number and joint meeting included the soft costs." I just wanted to relay that, tell you guys. Sure.
And I think we had a motion that never got voted on. And so maybe if people wants to withdraw that, that would be easiest way to just show them, show it withdrawn.
Which one?
He made a motion, he made a motion on the ninety-six hundred dollars.
Withdraw, withdraw my motion.
Show it withdrawn.
And I sent you that message there, Beth.
So what's that mean, so, so can you put that more later, sir?
I.
Soft cost, I hear. Do you have?
Sixteen-five all in. Yep. So. I think he was just letting us know that they're informing them before the June seventh.
So it's not to see fifty-five?
All in.
Okay.
And it doesn't include your soft.
It does include.
It does.
All in.
When I ask you that, will you? Okay, then listen. We want somebody.
Sixteen-five all in.
No, I don't have any. We are heading on June first and once again, I would like for all the council members to get a week in mind of when we're gonna start budgets. And we're not waiting till the last minute so that we can all plan our schedules and then we can make sure we're all here.
Have you got anything, bud?
No, I, do you want Joshua to send out an email so we can kind of set our dates?
I was, I was kinda waiting to see what, uh. Jackie's, uh, schedule was, she was supposed to have this contract that didn't get here for a week today. As soon as she gets us the contract, we'll do it for, actually, I, I. We need to, we need to formally approve, uh, whether we want to put Jackie under contract again.
Today?
Yeah, well, I mean.
Yes.
If we're gonna engage her and do all the scheduling.
You requested contract.
Yeah.
I don't want you to press the, the treaty contract with Jackie for the, uh, on the, on the.
Motion by Tracy Mark said you'll have your stopper to, uh, sign the AIC contract. That wouldn't be signed by the legislature, it would justify us. It's the same. All right, can you?
I have a question. So this drain, you're gonna take it out, you want me to advertise the riverboat? Just.
Any discussion on the AIC contract? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion here. Seven. No. Any other business? So for Tracy to answer your question, I, I think as soon as we get her, we can, we can lay out her timeline. Would you like to? Work with me on establishing that? Second. All right, motion to adjourn, Michael Ryder. Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.